Five thirty, let's call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bruin. Can't hear you, sir.
Here.
Thank you, sir. And just for the public's knowledge, Mr. Bruin is on video attending. Mr. Rajaratnam?
Here.
Mr. Heyman?
Present.
Mr. Gorman?
Here.
We have four present with Mr. Blades' excuse. He'll be joining us later.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Gorman? You're the only other.
Second, sorry.
That's okay.
Agenda approved.
Roll call. Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Public comment on closed session. Are there any comments from the floor? Any comments on the phone, please?
No comments.
Okay, so at this time, we will be moving into closed session for the conference with legal counsel.
For the record, counsel will be deliberating on one item, potential litigation, one case.
Let's call this meeting to order.
Yeah, can we have one of the Girl Scouts come up? That's okay.
If everybody can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please join me in prayer if you won't. Lord, thank you for this day, thank you for Ridgecrest, and for the opportunity which are given to us to serve this community. Lord, I pray for the Girl Scouts who are here. Lord, bless them as they learn to serve the community and help each other. Lord, as they grow, give them the courage, the strength, and the good character so that they can make a difference in this world. Lord, I pray for our police department, who put their lives on line and to protect this community from crime. Lord, bless their families. I pray for our country, give the leaders of our country your direction so that the country goes into the right path, Lord. Lord, as we commence this meeting, Lord, give us your wisdom so that we take right decisions and the decisions which are based on what is best for this community. Lord, bless each one of us here, in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen. Attorney's report out of the closed session.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Counsel had deliberated one item in closed session that was potential litigation and on a unanimous vote rejected a claim filed by Stephen Gilmore.
Thank you, sir. Now we have a few presentations. The first one is Girl Scouts' presentation to the police department by Councilman Blades.
Yeah, if you guys would like to all come down, I think it'd be great. It's gonna be to the police department. Okay, but Captain Tucker, if you don't mind coming down, we could give the presentation to you. The rest of the city council will join me down here. If you'd rather have the more PDs, if that's what you want.
Okay. So I request the counsel go to the podium so that we have, we do the other presentations. Good evening. The first presentation is a proclamation of the city of Ridgecrest, California honoring National Transit Driver Appreciation Day. Is anybody from Transit Department available here? Sir, can you please? Whereas transit operators manage to keep a schedule, check fares, give directions, announce and remember stops, and whereas they safely maneuver public transit vehicles through unpredictable traffic and adverse weather conditions, and whereas transit operators transport people to various places that include work sites, schools, shopping, and leisure activities, providing citizens from all walks of life with personal mobility and freedom, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of many people in this community greatly depends on their ability to rely upon the transportation services provided by our transit operators, and whereas the efficiency and effectiveness of these qualified and skilled professionals contribute to the quality of life that residents and visitors alike enjoy and rely upon, and whereas transit operators don't have an easy job, they just make it look that way. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Ridgecrest City Council that we recognize and extend appreciation to our dedicated and skilled transit operators and hereby proclaim March 18th, 2024 as Transit Driver Appreciation Day. Proclaim this sixth day of March 2024, signed by Mayor Eric Bruin, Vice Mayor Kyle Blades, Councilmember Scott Heyman, Councilmember Skip Gorman, and myself.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'd just like to take this moment to say thank you to the entire transit team. They work very hard getting people around the city, and also that I'm very thankful that we can take this time to appreciate them.
I just want to give a shout out to the little children because field trips is my, that's what I get a kick out of, like, they're unfiltered. We had one say, you know, my mom doesn't go this way. I'm saying, okay, well, what we're doing, we're going here so we can get back to Chana Lake Boulevard. Oh, okay, then she's quiet, but I like them to know where they are at all times in the city, and I teach them streets as we go, and thank you.
Make a picture.
Now we have few service awards which would be presented by other council members.
I don't know if Jeff Donnelly, Jeff, you're welcome to step forward. Jeff is getting a time in service of 25 years. That's a heroic 25 years as to, that's 25 summers, 25 winters, 25 years of sometimes contrary machines and uncooperative grass. 25 years, you made it heroic. Congratulations.
So it's my honor tonight to present a recognition of public service to Robert Barksdale. Is Robert, come on up. So Robert has been an employee for 10 years in Parks and Rec, and we just want to show our appreciation. Thank you, sir, for your hard work, and hopefully you're gonna be here for another 20.
Yeah.
So thank you.
It's been my pleasure.
Man, a minimal word.
Want to just go into the Girl Scouts while we're down here? Cool. Do you mind if I have the PD come down real quick? Thank you. And now the Girl Scouts as well. Yeah, girls, why don't you each grab a toy? So I had the distinct pleasure tonight of being able to show Troop 8147 around City Hall. They got to walk through the police department, talk to Captain Tucker for a while, Detective Beebe even showed him around the car, they got to look at the lights. Some of you almost ended up locked in the back, I don't know what was going on, but you got to see the gear and how everything worked, and then we walked through City Hall, saw the building apartment, and I have to say, it's an honor to have you here. I mean that, those aren't cheesy words. You're the, you are the future of this community. You're the future of the state, you're the future of the country, and the things that you're doing right now mean so much to everybody, a lot more than I think most of us realize. So all the steps you take, all these very responsible things you do, the kind-hearted things that you do, how empathetic you are, how you help each other, it means a great deal to this community, and you make it so much better. So thank you for being here, and I think you have a presentation for the police officers, don't you? Okay. Do you want to come down and say a few words?
So for our troop service project this year, we decided that we would build stuffed animals and give them to the police department, so, because we know that you guys like to keep stuffed animals in your trunks when you come across children who may need some uplifting in some bad situations. So we built these 40 stuffed animals, and we would like to present them to the Ridgecrest
They're pretty nice police officers. Would you, would you girls like to step right in the front and take a picture?
Come on, everybody hold one.
Absolutely, please do.
I was gonna go.
All right. I should hold once.
Rest them down. We got two, or we got some. You all good? Any more? You good?
Yes.
You're welcome. Here, there's enough. There you go. We've got one more down here. Come on in, someone. One more, there you go. Awesome. Yeah, girls.
We have one more officer.
Come on, he's.
Hurry, hurry, hurry. He drove.
Thank you, sir. Yes. No wait for them to. Good job, girls.
Thank you.
At this time, we will move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Counsel will not respond to any public comments but may provide direction to staff to collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not act on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Now we'll open it up to the public comment.
Is the microphone on? Okay, well, I guess it's my monthly visit to talk to the city council and the taxpayers of Ridgecrest and the voters of Ridgecrest. My name is Robert Blackwell, and I'm the local representative of the Kwaisu tribe, and this is a very good way for the tribe at this point to communicate because there's not a lot of avenues that are open to deal with the city of Ridgecrest. But I, first thing I want to thank, about two or three weeks ago, the tribe sent a Freedom of Information Act request into the city, and the city responded very professionally, timely, and I just want to thank the city manager and the city clerk. They were extremely professional, and I really do appreciate it. One of the big issues the tribe's trying to figure out is they find certain pieces of art in the city objectionable, and we're trying to find the history and basically how it was procured. From the information that we've received so far, it does not appear that it was procured through the city. It looks like it was procured, it might have been city funds, tax funds, well, clearly it was taxpayer funds, that might have gone to a separate agency, I'm not sure if it's a city agency or a state agency. We're still waiting for the response from that group, and we've, we've, we've sent out a number of Freedom of Information Act requests, but I just want to thank the city for their response. It was very professional, and that's what we would expect. You know, we still believe that there are issues with one of the council members who we think should recuse himself, and we will send a follow-up letter to the city council and to the city about why, even though that we do not believe now that the city directly procured the objectionable items, we believe that a recusal is proper, but I just want to thank everyone for the good work, and we will just continue to work through this process. The Kwaisu people are a loving and caring group of people, and they're seeking to understand a lot about what's happened in the city over the last 15 or 20 years. So we will continue to have open doors to the city and the city council, as well as we will continue to seek out the information that we need, and as we discover more, you know, whether it's what we expect or not, we personally did not, I did not expect to see that city funds were not used. So we learn it every day, and we just will keep working on it, and we will try to stay cooperative with the city and the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. Any other public comments from the floor?
Good evening, counsel. I'm here, I've got five minutes to, to take your time up and maybe waste some of it for you. And I'm here to talk about an item that was on the budget eight months ago and got approved. And I think the number was around $80,000 to fix the traffic signal at Raider and Upjohn. I'm here to give an update, how that's working. Two weeks ago, I went into the left turn lane at that intersection. As I pulled into the intersection, the lights were all red northbound. I stopped, and now I will start watching the clock so you can watch how much time I spent there. The clock is running. I'm sitting there along with other cars. Finally, the lights turn green after 15 seconds before the straight through left turn lane is still red. I'm still sitting there. If I'm wasting your time, that's how it feels like when you're sitting there. Okay, right about now, all those cars that were through the northbound green light have reached Upjohn. Cars that were behind me on Bowman, that light changed, and they're now catching up to me, and I'm still sitting in the left turn lane. As the clock continues to run here. Okay, so now we're at a position where I'm still sitting, the cars from Upjohn coming towards me, southbound, they came up and went through the intersection, as I sat there and watched them come all the way from Upjohn through the Raider intersection, and I'm And I'm wasting your time right now, just like hundreds of other people are wasting their time at this intersection, almost every day. Okay, we're two and a half minutes into my five minutes, and I'm still approximately 15 seconds away from the light turning green so I can turn left. Hold on, it's coming. There it is. Two and a half minutes, I sat there waiting for a left turn arrow, while traffic went by me northbound, all the way from Bowman all the way through Upjohn, southbound from Upjohn, past me towards going south, and I sat there that whole time. So what is my time worth? I don't know. How about my gas in my vehicle, sitting there, going nowhere? How about the hundreds of other, or maybe even thousands of other people? I know, this is a good Facebook comment. If you bring up this in your section on Facebook, people go crazy with it. And we're still waiting. Let me put it this way, let me put it in a different light. If we're not, if the people aren't important enough, how about the people that might be requesting maybe assistance from the police department? Okay? Say an officer was in my car, except it was an officer's car, and they had a call that they were being dispatched to, was not a call high enough priority that they could use lights and sarban and go through the red light, but it was still a pretty important call that they needed to get to as soon as possible, and they needed to turn around radar and just go back into that housing development a quarter mile off of, away from that traffic light. And they sat there waiting for an officer to arrive, to lend a service, and the police officer can't get there because they're faced with a red light. That doesn't change until it takes this good old time to do so. Does that maybe get your attention a little bit? If the people aren't important enough to save their time and gas, how about people looking for maybe a police officer to come down that street, stuck in a green, I mean in a red light on a turn lane? Think about it. Eight months, and this is what I saw about two weeks ago. I see the lights are flashing there now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Thanks for your concerns. We'll have the staff look into that matter. Any other public comments on the floor, from the floor? Seeing none, oh, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Troy Frazier. I'm 1.5 billion seconds old, and I think we had a flood back in September. Just wanted to give props and praise to the mayor Eric Bruin and no slouch council and the clerk for, got through it pretty good. I saw that there's an emergency on the phone, or we were in a state of emergency. And to make this short and sweet today, I'm wondering if I can put, or be all right, if I put buckets of food and water for birds on a green lawn in between the skate park and the Leroy Park. There's a whole lot of starving big birds, and everybody's all about the dogs, but I like birds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment from the floor? Any public comment on the phone? We'll give a minute for that. Seeing none, we will close the public comment session at 6:28, and we will move on to council announcements and direction. We'll start from the side, council member Skip Gorman?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Heyman?
I just want to say that the Ridgecrest City Knights was a major success, and myself and Master Chef Skip Gorman and his wife, Denise, actually it was Denise, Skip, helped. But she made a wonderful chili. The chili cook-off was great. We served, Councilman Blades and I were nonstop serving that chili until it was gone, which was about the time it ended. So we didn't get to move around too much out in the public, but it looked like a lot of fun. There was a lot of community support, a lot of families, and it looked like it was, I think, a great success and fun thing for the community, so hats off to the folks that commandeered this, and hopefully we'll see it again in the future. And thank God the wind came the following weekend, but just a big, big thank you to everybody for their hard work, because a lot of work goes into it, and it was, it was a great thing for the community.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Blades?
Just to add on to what Councilmember Heyman was saying, I appreciate all the hard work from the staff. It was a lot of work from every department, and I think one piece of the staff that doesn't get thanked a lot is the police explorers. They were key to getting that, getting things set up and getting it tore down, and so, Captain Tucker, if you could express our appreciation, it was, it was huge. And I'd also like to thank the city manager and Mayor Eric Bruin, being back in DC advocating for this community. It's, it's huge. So we love to give awards, we love to talk to the Girl Scouts, things are important for the future of the community, but currently what's going on in this community is being advocated for and worked hard behind the scenes, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Bruin from DC, do you have any comments?
Just one. Sorry I'm not able to be there this evening, but I want to reiterate my deep appreciation for everyone for Ridgecrest City Knights. Love seeing it get kicked off, and we're looking forward to the next one, looking forward to seeing y'all there. I personally enjoyed the act, and I know the kids did too. I thought that was a great addition, and kudos to our city staff that keeps keeping that event fresh and lively. I want to take a moment and address one public comment and thank Mr. Wicknick for reminding the community that we made the commitment to working on the lights. We, we are very proud of our efforts to follow through on items like this, and if I can ask Public Works Director Mr. Strick, Ms. Reed to reach out to Mr. Wicknick and give him an update as we did at our last council meeting on the lights and the progress we're making, and that the items had been procured, they had had some supply chain challenges, but if you can give him that briefing on where we're at with the lights, I would certainly appreciate it. appreciate it. And thank you again, sir, for bringing it to the city's attention, citizens' attention, that we're following through on those commitments. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, we'll be bringing that up during the city manager comments. We'll answer that question.
Thank you, sir.
I have one comment, a couple of comments on our economic outlook conference. The conference was, it was a very great event and very informative. And most of the people talked about building on the momentum. So that's what is happening in Richcrest. So that's why everybody recognized that. The college president, he talked about building on the momentum. And Captain Jeremy Vaughn talked about building on the momentum. And Mayor Bruin talked about building on the momentum. So Mayor Bruin talked about rebuild, reinvest, retain and recruit. Those are the three goals we have, and we are working on that. We are rebuilding after the earthquakes and after the hurricane Hillary. And we are reinvesting in our parks and we are reinvesting in sport complexes. And we are trying to get the topmost intellectual to, to the base and make sure that they have all the facilities available to be retained in Richcrest for a long time. So you see the work going on in the community, the roads are being repaired and sewer lines are being repaired. So things are moving, there is a great momentum. I just wanted to make a comment on that. So thank you very much for the city, the PowerPoint put up was excellent. Thank you for your hard work, for the staff. That's all I have. And now we'll move on to consent calendar. All items listed on consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent item may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Now I will read the two consent items. Number one, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the Richcrest City Council regular meeting dated February 21st, 2024. The second one, announcing proclamations prepared for the month of March and scheduled date of presentations. Does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled?
No.
Does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote, Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, discussion and action items, item number six. A resolution of the Richcrest City Council approving appropriations for the reimbursement to Sierra Sands Unified School District for construction of three additional box culverts on East Gold Canyon Street for a total amount of $250,800. And authorize the city manager, Ronald Strand, to execute all agreements to construct the project. Mr. Reed?
Good evening, Council. As you guys know, city staff and city manager and council have been making a conscientious effort to fix the known problems that we saw during the August floods. This, if approved tonight, this will be the third area that we will alleviate the flooding issues. The school district is currently doing improvements to which they're going to put two five-foot by five-foot box culverts in, under Gold Canyon, which will allow for roughly a 25-year storm to exit the area. With our additional three that we would like to put in, that will size the culvert over a 50-year event, and with the storage capability in the basin surrounding it, we believe it'll handle a 100-year event just fine. So with that, I know this is outside of our normal bid procure-build process, but we can assure you that it did go to bid. This was on school district plans, and this is an agreement for us to reimburse the school district. They are using a contractor that I have worked with in the past, they do good work, they're reputable. And with that, staff recommends the approval of this item.
Thank you, sir. Now I'll request for council comments, questions. Mr. Blades?
No, I appreciate the good relationship you have with the entities all around, to include the school district. I know that as things progress throughout the city of Richcrest, I'm able to tell the public when they ask me questions, that it's, it's going as smooth as it can because of our relationship with you and your relationship with the rest of the community. So, thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blades. Mr. Gorman?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Heyman?
I just want to say I like to see the flood mitigation projects and those of us that have been around for a long period of time have seen that each flood that we've had subsequent to the 84 flood, it's, it's improving. And so it's all good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think it's a win-win situation for both, right? So we are, we don't need to call for bids, so that, that process we are eliminating by going with what the Sierra Sands School District is doing. Am I right?
Correct. So Sierra Sands has actually already bid the installation of two, so they have bid quantities for this. And then they're, they actually are going to their board at the same time right now, because the school districts have a little bit different rules on how they can fund things. So they have to get special approval from their board to be able to spend, because this is more than their 10% contingency over what their project would be for that contractor. So they're doing some special stuff too, but it's a win-win for us. It's a win-win for the city, for Sierra Sands, because it further protects their school, and it also protects the North Sunland area, which was the area we were really worried about, why we did what we had to do during the storm to get the water out of that area. So it's definitely a win-win for the community.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. Now I'll open it up to public comment. Any comments from the public, from the floor? Seeing none, any comments on the phone? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council final comments, if any. Mr. Blades?
I have no further comments.
No further comment.
I don't have any comments. So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next item, item number seven. A resolution of the city council of the city of Richcrest approving the 2023 annual progress report of the general plan and housing element, including the regional housing needs allocation plan, and finding that the APR is not a project as defined by SICWA. Ms. Parlag?
She's getting the clicker.
Oh, clicker's right here.
Nope. We're on the hunt.
I was wondering if I had enough there, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Council. So tonight I have the annual for the housing element and the general plan. So each year, the state requires all jurisdictions to complete an annual progress report on meeting its housing element and its general plan. So the first portion is the housing element annual report. This is required by the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Planning and Research. So the housing element progress report is completed on forms that you'll find at the end of the report. So this is kind of a summary of all of the activity that was taken by us in the calendar year. So, and I will say that all the photos that are in these slides are new housing in our community. So, single-family planning commission entitled 572 units. Six were permitted and 12 were completed. For ADUs, we entitled 18. There was 13 permitted and one was completed. For two to four units, we had 26 entitled, 30 were permitted and six units were completed. For the five-plus units, we had 366 units that were entitled and 76 were completed. So the 76 that were completed is the Mojave View. Of the units that were completed, the infill housing accounted for 33, with 49 of those completed. The total applications received were 28, and out of those 28, we had 985 units, all of which were approved. Something new last year was the SB9, which allowed for the duplexes in single-family. So we had 12 projects, which netted us 24 additional units of housing. For the general plan annual progress report, this covers all of our activity for all of our general plans. So our general plan includes the land use, the community design, open space and conservation, health and safety, housing, circulation, and ours also contains the military sustainability The only amendment that we did last year for the general plan was for the Villa Crest Apartments. That was a 361-unit multifamily project that was approved and that required an increase in density. This kind of is a summary of all the different activities that the council, staff and planning commission completed.
That's a pretty cool slide. Can you go back to that one real quick?
So I'm going to cover it more.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So for circulation, I don't want to talk a whole lot about everyone else's apartments, because you guys will be hearing everything that they've been doing very soon. But I will say that this is the lovely new intersection of Ward and Norma that does not have a dip anymore. So there's that. That's a list of all the things that council approved in the past year. For land use and community design, most of these things were done at planning commission level. So we had some parcel map waivers and some site plans. We also did the ordinance that was to increase the time for map extensions, so that gave us a lot more housing units that were available. For open space and conservation, that's all of our parks. Nerissa, our Parks and Rec Director, just did a great presentation of all the projects to give you guys an update. So if anybody wants to know more, that was just in February. So for health and safety, again, that just kind of includes the electric vans and the law enforcement agreement with Sierra Sands. And then we had the eight maps that were extended by planning commission for our housing. And that's where the number for the entitlements came from in the housing element report. So over the next year, we do have some goals. The zoning code, we have amendments that we need to make to be compliant with our housing element, and just things that were outdated. So that's some of our goals. At this time, all of those have been through planning commission, so those will be complete in the next coming months. We have some rezoning for professional office, and there's some commercial, and there's single-family and multifamily that we would like to rezone to make it more compatible. So you guys should see that in the next year. And then probably most exciting for us is we were able to secure a grant, so we can do GIS for our zoning map. And also we'll integrate a lot of the public works as well into that GIS system, but we did secure funds to do that. And we also have funds for ADU plans, so there'll be standard plans available for the public.
Don't let her fool you with the we thing. She, she got us funds for that.
Yeah. Always doing the heavy lifting, Heather.
So the action that's requested tonight is for the council to direct staff to submit to the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Planning and Research before April 1st, the report that you have in your agenda tonight. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Parlag. I'll open it up to council comments. Mr. Blades?
Once filed, is it simply just filed, or is it filed and reviewed? Is there comments that come back to you?
There are no comments. Once it's filed, it does keep us in compliance with the state regulations, so that if housing projects want to come, then we are available for grant funds.
Thank you.
Councilman Gorman?
I'm new here. What does entitled mean in this context?
Absolutely. So entitled means that they have the ability to build. So in the instance of these, the track maps, they're tentative track maps, so they're divisions of land to build housing on. And it comes before planning commission for approval, and planning commission and staff review it for compliance with our development standards, and then it's available for people to build.
Thank you.
Mr. Heyman? Mr. Mayor, any comments?
No comments.
Ms. Parlag, this, Mayor, no comments from you? Can you hear us?
No comments. She's done a great job and it's a great plan.
Thank you, sir.
It's hard to believe he doesn't have comments.
He got wore out this last week.
So this is already reviewed by the planning commission and approved by them, right?
That's correct, yes.
So I have one question. My brain did not understand this. So we are seeing permitted are six and completed are 12 under single-family. So how can, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so a lot of times builders will get the building permit, so that's what the permitted means. And I should clarify, these definitions are all from the state and that are in the actual spreadsheets that you see at the end. So permitted just means that they have filed for a building permit. So sometimes it takes longer than a calendar year to complete the structure. So you might have people that submitted two years ago that are finishing, and they get the certificate of compliance.
Okay. Got it, thank you. I don't have any further questions. So we'll open it up for public comment. Any comments from the public on the floor?
Tom Wicknick, just one question. What happened to the state effort to do away completely with single-family, R1, single-family in cities?
So that is the SB9. So SB9 allowed for duplexes, up to triplex, in single-family zones. So that is active, and those approvals are at staff level, they're not available for public hearings. But that's what those SB9 units that were in the one slide, that show the duplexes in single-family.
Okay, but we can still zone single-family R1, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We're not prohibited from doing that?
Right.
Okay, because I had read somewhere that they were going to prohibit cities from even having that zoning, so I was just wondering the status.
No.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments on the floor? Any comments on phone?
Go ahead, caller.
Go ahead, sir. Hello, can you hear us?
He's got that delay. I'll run back.
Looks like we lost him.
We lost him. He's gone. He's gone.
Okay, I guess if he, guess if he calls back. All right.
Okay. Looks like no comments on the phone. Okay. Looks like no comments on the phone. I'll bring it back to the council for final comments, if any. Sir?
Nothing further. None?
Yes. Mr. Mayor? Just double checking, any calls on the phone?
Nope.
Seeing none, hearing none. So we'll move and request for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion and second roll call, please.
Mayor Bruin?
Mayor, aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Parlock. We'll move on to the next agenda item, a resolution to approve an equipment donation agreement between the City of Ridgecrest and Indian Wells Valley TV Boosters, Inc. City Manager, Mr. Ron Strang?
Yes, members of council, Mr. Mayor, what I have before you here is a equipment donation agreement between the City of Ridgecrest and Indian Wells Valley TV Boosters. As you know, the TV boosters have been providing free TV and radio service to the valley since the 50s and 60s. As you recall, about 18 months ago, they needed help with a couple of digital TV transmitters. We donated them that equipment. They came back to us last budget cycle and stated that they had the need for two additional units. Council approved that during the budget process. And in the meantime, staff with the help of the boosters have acquired that equipment. And so we're here today to finalize or get approval from the council to authorize that agreement, so then we can enter that and get them their equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Strang. Now I'll open it up for council comments. Councilman Gorman?
No.
Councilman Heyman?
Just want to thank them for their service that they provide to the city. It's well appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Blades?
Echo the same sentiment. The service that you provide to the community is invaluable. There's a lot of people that, just even this meeting, council other channels in the event of an emergency, I genuinely and deeply appreciate everything that you guys do.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, as my fellow councilmen said, it's the same. I mean, thank you for your service, for your time, and for your talent, which you're giving freely to this community. I appreciate that. And this is already budgeted and already purchased, I think, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, all we have to do is get the agreement signed by, once council approves it, by myself and a representative of the IWB boosters, and we can hand over the equipment.
Thank you, sir. Now I'll open it up for public comment. Any comments from the floor? Any comments on the phone? Seeing none, hearing none. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for final comments.
No further comments. Done.
May I make a comment?
I don't have any comments. So do I have a motion to approve an equipment donation agreement?
It looks like Eric might have something to add.
Do you have? Oh, sorry.
No problem, sir. Thank you. I just wanted to once again reiterate what was said earlier and thank the IWB boosters for coming to us during the budget cycle and alerted us how we can continue to serve this community. They can take, you know, a certain amount of time, but very excited to once again be able to see another item like we discussed earlier come into fruition through this budget cycle. So thanks, guys, for continuing. And please, you know, if there's any further needs, we understand the importance that you bring to this community, and we thank you for your service. And if there's something in the future, we hope that you'll come in back and let us know how we can assist.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I have a motion to approve an equipment donation agreement?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. I appreciate your presence and what all you do for our community. Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Unfortunately, it looks like, let's go one by one. Infrastructure Committee was canceled due to lack of quorum. Economic Development Committee canceled due to lack of quorum. Parks and Recs, that's canceled. City Organization, next meeting is going to be 3/7. Finance Committee, next meeting, 3/12. RACEBP, next meeting, 3/27. So none of the committees had any meetings during last month, so there are no reports from them. Next, we'll move on to other committees, boards, or commissions. None. We'll move on to City Manager Report. Mr. Strang?
Yes, I'd like to have Mr. Reed come up and explain a little bit more about our streetlights and how they're being repaired and some of the other issues we may be having over the next few weeks.
It's a nice tie, Travis. I like that.
So the hot topic, streetlights. It's going to get worse before it gets better.
I don't know if that's
That's just the nature of the beast. So with what we're doing with a comprehensive upgrade, you're going to see one intersection go down at a time where we change the controller. A lot of them are changing the cabinet, because the cabinets have shorts, have grounds, and I'm not going to spend the amount of money that we are spending on our signals and take a chance on a cabinet, a $5,000 piece of equipment ruining the $80,000 that we're putting into each light. So when we change the cabinet, the controllers, the new controllers are not compatible with the old otoscopes, so we have to put the lights in what's called recall. Recall is a time to literally, you set a time for straights, you set a time for left turns. We're not going to guess perfect on every intersection. I think people saw the eight seconds that it had on Drummond and Norma the first night that I was out in the middle of the night to change the timing on. It's not going to be perfect every time. Radar is one of the first that we have on our list. It was in flash today because it was getting work on the cabinet and setting the controller up, and it will be the first one that we put the radar technology on. But it's a process. We have to go through, get them all set up with all the controllers, so that way when we outfit the radar, the controllers will work and you can do your stuff. So it is going to get worse before it gets better. It's systematic, has to be that way, so that way we can do the process.
Can you explain why we chose a radar over the cameras?
Yes. So as everybody knows, camera technology out in Ridgecrest, when you have sun in the morning, and sun in the afternoons, and sun all the time, and shadows from the trees, doesn't like dark cars with trees and with things like that. So we went radar because radar doesn't care about shadows. It just has, it senses movement. We set zones, anything that drives through it, it will see it, it will pick it up, and it will know it's there. So it's not affected by fog, it's not affected by sun, it's not affected by wind, it's not affected by any sort of weather. So we felt that for our weather patterns out here, that that was probably the most logical choice for us. So that's where we're at with signals. But it is, it is coming along. We are going, I know we had to wait a long time for controllers, but we've got all the controllers now, we've got all the pieces now. It's just a matter of systematically getting them all put in, pulling new wires, things like that. So.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Next.
I just have a couple more things. The Clean California Project is on track. We're still hoping that it'll be completed by June of this year. There's a lot of activity, a lot of work that's going on out there. I think that once they get that completed, that park is going to look very good. As part of that process, we're looking at refurbishing one of the soccer fields, and that's going to require us bringing in dirt from outside the community and then hydroseeding it. So we're hoping that we can accomplish the same thing we seen at Pearson Park. Once we rehab that park after Hillary, that park has come back pretty strong. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, sir. Future agenda items. Councilman Blades?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Gorman? Councilman Heyman? Mayor Bruin? I take it, no?
Nothing, sir.
I don't have any. So next item, Mayor and Council comments. Councilman Gorman?
I do. I'd like to be last, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Heyman?
None.
Councilman Blades?
Nothing, sir.
Mayor Bruin?
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to say hello to everyone in Wendy Ridge, Ridgecrest from Washington DC. Wanted to take a quick moment just to remind the community and the citizens that we are actively working, as always, on all the issues that we know are important to you. This includes, obviously, water, our hopes for land identification, and our hospital. That's all I can say for right now, but I do want to make that statement that we are actively out here working proudly for you. I want to thank City Manager Strang for joining me in DC for the last couple days and working very hard side by side with me, as well as Commander Vaughn, who was instrumental in helping us, as well as CEO Jim Suver of the hospital. Thank you to all these gentlemen for working with our city to address this and issues. And I can't go beyond that, but for now, I just want to let our citizens know that we are proud to be serving you and we're continuing to advocate on your behalf. And when we have more information we can share, we look forward to it. And that would be it.
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank Boy Scouts who are here. Really appreciate your time and staying throughout the meeting. So hope you learned something good from this meeting. So thank you for being here. That's all. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Have a great day. Thank the city staff for
Oh, oh.
Sorry.
If you'll indulge me, I'll take two and a half minutes, okay? A friend of mine walked into my shop recently and asked me if I had an hour to spare. He wanted to take me for a ride. Something in his voice compelled me to agree to join him in his pickup truck and take a guided tour of Ridgecrest, warts and all. He drove into some of our most modest neighborhoods and slowly passed abandoned and occupied houses and mobile homes, which are neglected, coming apart, strewn with trash, and evocative of ugly, tragic, personal failures, all. He was quiet, and so was I. Indeed, had my friend the presence of mind to play on his truck's audio system, a loop of the sound of silence in the background, the experience might have been intolerable. I came away with the glum impression that we have perhaps more than our fair share of completely foundered houses and squalid vacant property, along with disintegrating mobile homes here in Ridgecrest. Now, please listen. As a retired engineer, I cherish being confronted with a fully defined problem. Those have solutions. This doesn't appear to. Our many islands of blight are symptoms which indicate maladies that defy categorical cause and effect labels. And without knowing the causes, we can't dutifully set about applying abatements and comprehensive cures. It would be easy and perhaps satisfying in the short term to simply alert our nuisance abatement or code enforcement office in the police department about this again. But from what I saw, we're sadly, quote, "going to need a bigger boat," unquote. And the kaleidoscope of growing drug use, serious family issues, and/or transcendent character failures defy all but perhaps the most thoughtfully prescribed remedies. The city's blighted lots, along with their local, county, state, and national contributions, need to be acknowledged and discussed. We have lots of committees peripheral to the city council meetings, and the subject of blighted lots can be generally aired out publicly in one of those committees without having to be unnecessarily specific and with the help of professionals. Please let me know what you think about this. I'll get the conversation started.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gorman. So any other comments? Nope. Before I say goodbye, no. I forgot one, one thing, one announcement. I apologize. Rotary Club, China Lake, their Dollars for Scholars auction is this Saturday. Tickets are still available, so you can contact Patty, or Betty, or Rika. So it's a, it's a great event. So it's a good cause to give scholarships to high school graduating students going to college. So I would encourage our citizens' participation in that. So with that, I'll call this meeting adjourned at 7:06. Thank you all. Good night.